I'd like to call this meeting to an end, June of August the 20th, 2020. I'm needing approval of the minutes for July 16th, August and August the 6th, 2020.
All votes in favor.
Can you get a vote? Okay. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Hamilton, Ken Hamilton with, uh, the United States of States. Mr. Ha- Mr. Hamilton, would you care to call up and address the council?
Okay.
You can come right here.
According to the head.
He does know his mark.
First of all, thank the mayor for allowing me to come.
If you don't, I'm sorry. One second. If you could, there are the TVs on, the thing's on if you want to talk, talk to us and talk to the, the camera.
Let's see. Okay. How long have you been?
I know, but just, just put your hand on the quibble. That's all that matters.
You're fine, you're right. Just address everybody.
I'm not for agenda. I'm here because the response rate in Russell County is low, but this is not a criticism. Why don't you understand that? We're here, we're gonna blitz this county unless the pandemic is worse, but as it stands now, people are being trained. There may be some in the field already. I'm here to tell you that we're moving into what we call a phase that I'm involved in, the same QA, where we're going to go wherever there are people like at the job fair or where they're distributing food. Maybe to schools, anywhere where there's gonna be a crowd of people. We'd like to come and we'll ask the simplest question. Have you done your census? If not, we can do it right now on the spot, or if it's not feasible and you can't do it at home, wait for a census paper to come. Or if you have a telephone at home, all you gotta do is call them and you can do it later with the telephone. That's what the MQA part is and that's my part. The figures as of today, Russell County has, the self-response rate is fifty-four point eight percent. In other words, that percentage of people have already done their census. Twenty-three point three percent of that was done online, which you see what happened in two thousand and ten. So you're less than three percentage points being equal to two thousand and ten now. And in my mind, that's pretty remarkable considering the pandemic and people are facing some problems besides being counted. So if anyone on the council, uh, I'm gonna send you some information there and you'll have my phone number and everything. And also the census phone number. If, if you know of a job fair or a place where they're distributing food, for example, I was in the rural county, dig for yesterday. They give away tractor trailer load of pork. We did talk to three hundred and twenty cars that day and we got twenty-two people to stay long enough for us to give them down. And in the system. There were fourteen that hadn't done the census, but they just had time to, to do their census and they said, we promised to do it.
Right. Well, I, I do know that they hand out commodities is either the second Thursday or the first Thursday of each month. Uh, and I can get you that once you send me the information. I'll email you back and tell you for a, a specific, uh, day that they do that. And they, they, they service about three to four hundred people there.
We're, we're willing to go along with Steve, but tomorrow I'm gonna be in Taylor County, which is where I live by the way. And, uh, they have a soup kitchen and they, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they feed, I, I don't know how many people. I haven't been there before. They had to cancel tonight. They're gonna do it tomorrow, I think. And we'll simply talk to those people and a lot of them aren't gonna be homeless, but we'll never ask them if they're homeless. They have to volunteer that. If they volunteer, there's a special way that we can count that. For the general aforementioned, universities, they'll be counted. The kids that go to school full-time, they'll be counted separately. They won't be counted as part of the household.
Does anybody have any questions for the council?
I know you've got a big agenda, so first, no questions?
I didn't, I didn't mine online. That was, it was pretty handy like that.
Yeah, it, it, it didn't take questions.
I, I think it's about ten minutes.
I didn't mine online too. I, yeah, probably no more than ten minutes.
I mean, it's. Have you, have you done your census?
Yeah.
Mine's done.
Yeah, they're all, they're, they're all live. So, but anyway, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hamilton?
All right.
Mr. Hamilton, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the second thing on the agenda is, I think we got the folks here to discuss, uh, a property on Popple Street. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I live actually on twenty-two Popple, right around the corner of Popple and six nine ten. We have a resident that conglies my property right behind me, sixty-four Popple. Um, Mr. Young residence. Um, I have a couple other neighbors there beside me and they couldn't make it. They have a book calling that they couldn't be out in practice. But I have got pictures from nearby property. Uh, Mr. Ruby Chapman used to own this property and, um, stayed just like mine, beautiful, you know, everything. Um, and sold it to the Young residence. It's actually become a junkyard. I mean, I, when ordinance passed, I was tickled death because it had stuff in there that, you know, I figured could take care of the problem that's occurred. I mean, there's, I couldn't get all the close-up pictures to show, but it does show some. I mean, there's probably ten, twelve cars that's parked in the back of stuff that's, they've been there so long, it's rolled around them. Hood's open, back door's open, I mean, like if you went into a junkyard. Um, Thursday, wife of us sitting driveway has been there since the day they moved in, three years, black tires sitting driveway. Um, for two years, there's a body of code that parked in the front yard with weeds that's rolled up around it that, you know, is bad. I was trailers that he got a parcel. But they're like his maid, like dog pen on the field, trash and weed cans. At the time, I didn't have to have a privacy fence because I couldn't let all the council see my pictures of what I did. We didn't have a privacy fence that went down through there because of that property, I mean, Mr. Chapman. But when it would rain or so much trash he brought in, I had a mistake home to the next door to me and I just parroted it for her because of the rage. When she's going for driveway, it was just a full view of it, just like my, my back driveway. When it would rain or blow wind, I would spend an hour out and acting up trash, weed cans coming out here. So I spent twenty-five hundred dollars and put a privacy fence across there. Well, at that time, there was no weeds up there, so that helped us on that conjunction of that. Now, where the trailer sits behind on their property, a home trailer, where the little helicopters fall out of trees, it looks like a jungle that goes around the whole thing. I mean, I will, like I said, present all the pictures for y'all to look. They are actually leaning over the whole privacy fence. Um, the neighbor, the servants' home that's yard can jump and like hail it, mind you, anyway. It actually is all over their fence and stuff. Um, there's junk boats sitting there and like I said, there's, like a horse trailer that's full of trash there in four years. Um, I signed complaints, um, Mr. Mayor, I spoke to you, they, they started into the lunar cans, um, two and a half car garage full of trash and lunar cans. He just shoved them in the driveway and just run them in the car. We heard that for three days. They're still laying there. My other main problem with this, two big things as far as health-wise, I have, you know, little rules there that goes for five kids. I have a path that runs up the yard now. I've actually took a BB gun and killed rats. I never had a problem seeing rats or nothing like that come through there, but there's a path where they come back and forth through the yard, going to this trash. That has concerned me because I don't let my children right there. I'm scared walking across that. I have two dogs, even though they have rainy shots, they just throw the trash out there. And there's a swimming pool that is there. And it is stuff that's rolled around. I mean, I pointed pictures out and the water is so green, it's like a syrup.
What, what, please?
It's like a syrup where it's so green. I mean, if you stuck your hand in it, it'd just be, just like picking an ankle grass. And that there would be nothing like, you know, just mosquitoes. I mean, I have a great big back porch. I enclose half of it so I can sit inside. I have anyone or have a hot tub on it. And if evening comes down after especially, when it's humid, I cannot sit out on my back porch. We don't even run in our yard now that's humid or even in my hot tub. It smells like I live in the middle of a dump. Where the trash that, I guess it wouldn't just be trash in August, like when you have the trash, it'd be like a methane smell. It's like that. And it's just, I don't know what else to do. I mean, I, Mr. Tyler is helping me. I mean, I filled out, when there's complaints on it. I just have the question of, I've read through the ordinance just on the first page of looking at it. I mean, he's within violation of all, I mean, I, there's a homemade car trailer he's got that has probably thirty or forty heat pump units off the house that was stacked up. And he cranked up in and I think after I spoke to you, um, when we got the complaint with him, my last complaint, which hurt ten hands. Next day, there's three or four, he's bringing in three or four trucks full of trash, dumping out and he's saying it was pretty much, he was telling the neighbor that he had a slight stroke. But twenty minutes later, he's bringing in another, you know, a big scrap of metal. And the way I was looking at him on the ordinance is that, you know, pretty much you just can't, you know, have stuff open like that, scrap in and just to lay it around. I mean, if it was just a piece or two, yes, but I mean, this is just, you know, huge. And my concern is, and other neighbors is, it's gotten this hand now of that, that, you know, now we're concerned about our property, we got it going now. And I mean, you have, there's pictures here of, of like a drain that he has built in his yard on the road, but I have another property that me and my mother have across the street from me on Popple Hill at twenty-one. When it rains, all them can see it out, it washes due to drain and now go over to the other yard and taking all this trash up before all this. And I just, I was pleading with the council to see if there's something, I mean, that could be done. My concern is, you know, it's, it's, it's just terrible. I mean, if I could, I can get all the pictures, I mean, for y'all to be able to see, I mean, it's just, I mean, if y'all could, please, just go down.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I asked.
Sure, sure.
I know it's a, a lot of them, but.
Which property, which property do you own? Do you own the old chapter bar blanket?
Yes, yes, Mr. Tyler, yes. My mother bought that and then I ended up actually just purchasing from her. And, yeah, we, we're right there on the corner and right across the street, um, uh.
A law tenant?
Yeah, uh, Mrs. Carol, I can't remember last time my mom bought that through an auction, so I parroted that from my mother. It's like a summer house for her. But the way the drain comes over it, I actually, you know, cause the rain runs it, but it just brings all trash from that direction and, you know, it's just, I could do it. I mean, I hate to say it, I could do it. Don't bother me to pick up the cans from over the grass or trash. It's just the smell and when I'm sitting on my back porch and I, you know, the whole time, I'm out there since two thousand and twelve, my mom's been there and she bought it from Chuck the Barber leaving oh-four. And when I would come over, I mean, I know you're gonna like to see a possum or whatever, you might see a rat, but I never seen rats. And I mean, I literally shot two of them with a needle. And then with that, I mean, I got a small, I got a small one from nine years old all the way to eighteen years and.
Yeah, I see the issue too.
Yeah, it's painful thing that, that's, I mean, I spray in the yard and everything and, and my other concern is, is, um, I had surveyed when I went to back for my mother and Mr. Smith, when he came out surveyed, he gave me a good hint because I was having a big battle. He, the, Mr. Young's walked over like twenty feet of my yard, stuck a big stake in my yard. This is where the problem happens. Well, no, Mr. Smith has done this, so we had to, I had to go to Mr. Shear, the county attorney, and he took care of that on that. And it was a big battle on all that and he told me when I put my fence up, just make sure I was like eight inches on my property. Well, on the back side, which I can't get over to sit above all the weeds and I don't want to go back there. I done from where my fence starts all the way to Ms. Holson. Every other post, just to make sure because they had their kid that would climb across my fence. I've been had repairs a couple times. I got no trespassing signs in prior property on every other post. And it's actually on my property. And I mean, I've been threatening as far as I'll get, I'll get a chainsaw, I'll cut it down, I'll do it. And it just went to that and I pretty much now, I've, I did little piddly jobs inside my garage. I don't go past my product. I see them happening. That's only not seeing my fence up. But now, when you see the pictures coming around, I mean, these little helicopter things, I mean, there's some tolerance still in that, you know, and they're actually, I can't believe he's letting them grow because he's got a home trailer out there and they're actually growing through the backside of the home trailer. I think, um, Mr. Tyler actually stopped by the very first time and it actually, he seen it before it got this bad. It's actually worse now. It's just the, it, the rodents and it just, you know, and stuff, I mean, I just, I just can't let my kids out there take a chance. I mean, it would never have before and it's just getting worse as far as the junkyard and the rodents. But I, the thing that's gotten me, I don't know what is so horrible, you know, but everybody different, but, you know, just why not just set your trash out to care of it? So just walk into a two-car garage and just fill it up, two facillin' and trailers and, you know, everything else. I mean, it's, there's just other things back there, just the stuff that drove so much and just far now from the road and, I mean, used to before that. This, I can stand on the roof of my house and I mean, it's, just like I walked in the middle of a junkyard to take a picture. But now it's grown up to where you can't see as much. You can see there's still a lot there and I just, I'm just pleading with y'all. Just, not just me, but a couple other things. I mean, this hole's been there seventy-five years and she informed us, uh, last week that she is actually moving. And she's been there probably longer than anybody in that neighborhood. And it ain't just us, like I said, we had another one. He's football's coach and he couldn't make it. He told me he was trying, trying, trying. And so while actually.
Yeah, he's spoken.
It, okay, so I actually went over on the backside of the property. He told me to go over and take a picture down his backside and, and he was concerned about it. And I actually even told the Young residents that, you know, hey, when you do something or I'm going to the council because it's like you said, not only that, it's taken our value down. I mean, he's got kids like I do and he's got animals and, you know, my animals are just like my kids. I don't wanna get that by one animal in America.
I had concerns about pool in there that has water in it with kids. Is there any kind of fencing or anything around the pool that keeps kids from getting in?
It's made to like a, it's made to like a, like the back deck on their house. I think one of the pictures, it looks like a banana tree or a palm tree thing. That's where the pool is. That's all it's grounded is just weeds that's over there. I mean, if you, as far as just at nighttime, if you say, get your out and sneak up, oh, yeah, there's water.
There is water in the pool?
Last I remember before summer, it got real high and that's probably mid-summer, I would say about two months ago. That's when I could see real good, I mean, bright room. I mean, it, I don't know how to explain it. To me, if it was men at that far, I would go, I could just go away and talk anything that far. And but at evening time, I mean, just, that's the only way I can explain it as far as the name of it, is the methane gas smell. He went in the middle of a dump and just stood there. And if it's humid, like if it's cool out like today, it's been real bad, not that bad, but say ninety, ninety-five degrees, humid, it cooled down at evening, oh, it's pitch black. And I mean, it's, I have, I don't know what else to say. It's gone. I just plead with y'all that it's something. And I don't know, you seen when I'm hopping, I'm gonna drive a palm tree and there's so much rolling around that we can only see like pieces of the pool. And it ain't. And I got one picture, it looks like a bush, if you see it, so I can explain like, um, it looks like a payment towards the other house this time and it's like a bush that's into the road. That's actually the drain. Cause like when it rains, you can be able to go underneath the road and it comes out on the, on the property across the street. But that is all that, and nothing can go in it because you, you don't, you know, take care of it or nothing else. And so when it rains, it just washes all around. So when it forces around, it backs up and wherever is loose into the driveway, I'm catching across the road. And I, I hate to go this way, I mean, you know, I've actually, before I ever even come to take the plane, I've tried to ask before, even before I put the fence up. And it's, there's no, I don't know what the right word to say. I guess easiest word would be, uh, there's no justifying with any kind of compromise. I mean, even trying to compromise of anything. I mean, there's no, it just gets worse. I mean, for the last couple, I live, um, live with a son who had actually called the police because he, he, it's his grandkid. It finds on the roof of the garage of his property. They'll jump on these home trailers and they get like trailers, all he means, there's trailers in there, like car, uh, um, pouches or whatever. And these kids, they bounce across. Then when they come back around, they'll actually walk on the top of my fence to get back and jump like on top of my house, which I told him and told him. And now I'm just at the point that they don't know it, so I hate for a pedally thing to have to bother, you know, the officer to do it, but I mean, what else can I do? I mean, it, it's somewhere, it's gotta stop and it's gotta, I mean, every day it's just something new that, that comes in. I mean, it's, it's just bad.
HK, what's your op?
Well, I've been reading the statute. I mean, it seems like what he has stated is clearly within our nuisance ordinance. And there's a process to do, but it required to notice to him. Publication and then week and after publication, take action to evade the nuisance and then push. Uh, we're gonna recoup, attempt to recoup our expenses.
Yeah.
I guess we have to decide what is the worst part. Sounds like there's several things. Rats and, and the, 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 the pool.
The pool, the abandoned vehicles. All that kind of goes together. So the issue is we decided to bite the bullet, the, the, the chain standing there for somebody.
That's my neighbor that couldn't make it. That's, that's.
We need to take action.
He is, uh, that would be the back of, uh, John.
Give a cert, a lot of time. Five days, five days.
Five days?
Yeah.
And actually, uh, to clear ourselves, I don't know that, that our ordinance also provides publishing the paper for a couple of weeks. It's not an exigent situation where there's a, you know, that somebody's gonna die immediately, slow death.
No.
But there's a, a provision in here where we can serve notice and, and give two weeks notice in the newspaper, my publication. That no one could argue, I think, in that instance, because they didn't have notice of what we were going to do.
Right.
But, uh, it's really.
What we do send a certified letter to?
Certified letter or the best way would have our.
The police can, the police chief or.
The police can hand him a paper.
I mean, if it make it easier, I, I wouldn't care if it was three months if it took, you know, a few years.
Oh, no, no, we don't need that.
I mean, just as what I got.
You, you, you're always not alone.
She, she, she don't wanna do that, nor do you. So let's don't go there. Uh, but what we will do is, but now the council has to understand that this is, will be a expense that we might not recruit, but.
Well, we can put a lien on the.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And we can force the sale.
Yes.
When you say five days, is that five days for them to start or five days to get it?
I think that probably is five days from the time that Jeff or his people would go ahead and serve notice on it. And if they fail to do that, then we could go ahead and start moving to, to evade whatever our portion of it. But there's so many different things here. I mean, you got the pool, you got the, the, the.
I don't think five days to do it.
No, I, it'd take probably five weeks.
But, but if you were doing it, if you started doing it, I guess in good faith, we could.
Well, we, we demand.
We want to act in good faith. We want, we, we want to do enough to evade the nuisance and comply with the law and give, you know, our citizens a safe place to live. But this, sounds like it's affecting his health and his family and everything else. And all the mosquito-borne illnesses. Absolutely, absolutely. That affects.
That, that, right. Terry.
I tell you, you got that right to seal this business.
Like I said, my main concern is just, I know, I, I'm, I don't, I don't know about animals, but just like water, I know, I know mosquitoes. That's where they come from, man. My visual's seen the rats, that's all I'm.
So my question is, is the council willing to proceed?
Yes.
I think yes, we need to get something done.
Okay, then we will need a vote, okay? I need a motion to proceed on the sixty-four Popple Street.
I'll make a motion. Say.
Say.
And all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Then we'll, you, you will start the process tomorrow? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great work, gentlemen.
Do you got those forms?
I get, uh. I got it ready.
Thank y'all, thank y'all.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming.
Now, does anybody else have anything for the Popple Street, property on Popple Street? Okay. All right. Uh, center on the agen, on the agenda is the, uh, bond and local council agreements. Uh, basically, these are for a membrane, uh, for a water plant. Again, we really don't have an option. We have to have these to do. And this is just the, uh, basically giving HK, uh, to notice that he is our legal counsel and thus to allow, uh, Ruben and Hayes, uh, to represent and contact, remain in contact with HK concerning the, the documents they are preparing for us.
Who's Ruben and Hayes?
It's a, it's a law firm out of, uh, Louisville. That represents the bonding.
That's, that's who our neighbor recommended?
Right. And so that's who we went with. So I just.
What's the bonding? What, who we say, who is it? Jonathan.
Jonathan.
That sound the last lady.
Renting, renting.
Oh, that's right.
Renting.
Jonathan, yeah, that's a renting.
Uh, I just need a motion to approve that, uh, to allow the HK to be our local, uh, council and them to be our bond council.
Motion to approve. Say.
All votes in favor.
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay. Stop that. And, uh, basically, it's the same song and dance. We're going to get another cruiser. Uh, this will be a F-one-fifty truck. Uh, we're getting this for the winter months. When I first took office, it was, my first two years of mayor was an eighteen-inch and a sixteen-inch snow. And as history has, has said in many numerous times, it will finally repeat itself. So, uh, so that's why we are acting on this one. This, that's the cruiser that we are, that is cruiser that Chief, Chief Kearns is asking for, is a F-one-fifty four-door. So I need a motion to allow me to act as the, uh, to sign off documents concerning this, uh, grant.
Just saying it goes through, dude.
And it is, it is saying it goes through.
Over the ground.
Yeah. I just need a motion to allow that.
To apply for the grant?
Yes, apply for the grant, sign off.
Yeah, this, this resolution is just an authorization resolution, just saying he, he is, the nigga's authorized to review and sign this in a documents folder today.
For the, for the grant.
Motion to approve. I'll make a motion. I'll say.
All votes in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Now, uh, every year we have a, a nine-one-one interlocal agreement, uh, with the official board in the city of Russell Springs to fund twenty-five thousand dollars of the, uh, of the nine-one-one sys, system. Uh, so we have, always in the past, we budgeted for it. Uh, we just need to enter into that local agreement.
I'm in a vote.
Okay.
Say.
All votes in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, the interlocal agreement is basically, uh, the same one we do every year. Is the, we will, the county will help us in adventure, which they are right now, uh, and we will help them in adventure. So I just need a motion to continue that interlocal agreement.
What, interlo, interlocal agreement? Is this different from the nine-one-one?
Yes, this is, this is a road agreement aside.
Oh, a road agreement. I'm starting to hit the mast on it.
I'm sorry.
I couldn't understand.
One is actually taking these things off.
For all the trouble.
So this is the interlocal, inter, inter, interlocal road agreement. I just need a motion to approve that.
I'll make, make a motion.
Yes, say. All votes in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, before we get into the, uh, G subsection, I'm going to just do my mayor's report real fast. As you all can see, the quadrants are nine, the, the highway one-twenty-seven business section is almost complete. They're at the south end of the uni, one-twenty-seven business section of Jamestown, and I can honestly say that it is terrific. Uh, I don't know if anybody, I think probably all of you all have. Uh, I don't know if anybody, I think probably all the Jew hall have passed at least once or twice, uh, since the time they do, they got done it. So, uh, I think we've done a phenomenal job, I want to thank, got the Shannon Rock, Sillies, uh, asphalt for the, uh, for the striking of the lines, I think it looks just amazing. The yellow, the curbs and all that, I think it looks just wonderful. So, uh, again, that was done with the interlocal agreement and with the state transportation. So again, we don't see somehow these things come to fruition, but the interlocal agreements, they do work and they do help.
Kinda missed the bumps, they kept me awake every morning going to work.
Well, and I'm
Well, I have a question in relation to that, I know they've got all of their signings on the square down
Yes, the, the site's coming.
Yeah, and, and they'd be putting that back up soon, I'm sure. Uh, but I also know that we've had another truck strike to monument here recently.
Yes.
And I firmly believe that one of the main causes of the trucks hitting the monument is because you have truckers that come in here, they've never been here before, they don't realize that monument's there. They don't realize they gotta make that sharp nine and three left until they're already on the square. And by the time they realize it, they haven't positioned themselves to get around it.
Right.
Because they didn't realize it's there until we're on top of it. So can we get the state to go back down, where is it, South Main?
Yeah, East Cumberland.
East Cumberland. Uh, can we get the state to go back down there maybe where, uh, the old
Dollar Street?
Antique places, yeah.
Old Magic Centers.
And, and put up some kind of signage back there warning these truckers before they get on the square that you're getting ready to have to go around this roundabout. So they can set themselves, they can go around
What we can do is, we can, we can ask the district eight in Somerset to do that, meaning it is a state road. We'll have to get that, that, their permission to do that, but they, they more likely than not
Sure, sure. So Just some, just ask her, just some kind of signage for the roundabout?
Yes, to say approaching the roundabout.
Right.
And, and when, when all this was done years ago, you had cavalry trucks and the longest trailer then would have been a forty-five foot, now you got conventional and fifty-three foot.
Right.
Now, I'm gonna tell you, that's a big, I drove trucks, it was a big difference.
Uh, and so, well, that's what we
Charlie Melon, Hardman.
Yeah, and she's really good, Manne Hardman, she's really good and she, she will help us if she, if she can
I mean, I, I believe that if we gave them truckers warning before they got on the square, that the roundabout is up here, then they could, they could, uh, set themselves up to get around it.
True.
You know, and not
You know, I know other cities have, have, we don't have any cameras that, that I know of anyway. Uh, and I don't know the cost, just, just work with, with a camera, uh, four cameras catching the rear end of every vehicle going around, where you see the whole square. Uh, it could be handy besides, besides the, uh, truck problem.
The only worry I have is if they have to have Wi-Fi to run. Uh, I don't know, well, we can look into it though.
Well, you know, uh, you can see license plates, one of them, there's been, uh, if, if they come around and they do damage, then, then they are paid for.
Sometimes the renter should pay.
I agree. Uh, so what would I will do is I will, uh, ask the chief to look and see if we can look and see if we can get, get cameras and what they, if we have to have Wi-Fi, that might be the only issue that I think we might have.
Yeah, also the last truck that Tony's talking about, it actually was coming off of East Cumberland and turned, was turning to go down ninety-two towards the Marina when it caught the square. So if we were to do the signage, we might have to
We do all, all the
Areas that you approached or something, just, because it was
Oh, yeah.
It was making a very, it would have basically been a left turn, he just didn't allow it, caught the truck and blow the tire and damaged. I, I don't think a lot of damage, but did not damage one of the marble slabs there.
I don't, I don't know how, I was going to work one morning several years ago, I think it's for the flag post, where is that? There was the whole rear end of a truck, the whole back end sitting on, on the, on the monument there. I don't see it could do it, if you tried, without burning it.
I don't know how you get, I, I mean, I know what Kerry's saying, it's hard to maneuver that, but I, you know, I just
Yeah.
But on, on other ones, I just don't see, but, uh, but anyway, I
It's been cut down conservative with the bypass coming in.
Yes, it has.
It used to be about once a month.
And I'll be honest with you, I think we put, uh, signage, they put signage saying north one twenty-seven is this way at the bypass. That would help too. Uh, because I think they're thinking, their GPS is telling them to go around this way. Cause they were saying that's the, that's how you get the north one twenty-seven.
Yeah.
And so my thing is, I believe if we had a signage before you get there saying north one twenty-seven is this way, that would help tremendously. But we will look into that, uh, very soon.
I, I just saw it's more quicker than, I don't, I don't know the cost though.
But, and, and we'll find out that. But also, uh, put this on your calendar, August the third first, that will begin the downtown water project. As you can see, if there was a section of one twenty-seventh from Main Street that is not been repaved, that's where some of the meeting will be. Uh, we will have, Chief Kearns will be working on the route. We're gonna be having a final pre-construction meeting next Tuesday, Wednesday?
What, it's on?
It's on Wednesday, next Wednesday. Uh, we'll have that final that and then we'll tell us more and then what to expect on that first day. Uh, I know they're starting out front inside, in front of City Hall, uh, and I don't know how long that's gonna be, but they have a hundred and twenty days weather for meeting and everything else for me. Pandemic and all that. But, folks, this is a big deal. This is a big, 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 big deal. It's not only for the city of Jamestown, but the people that we serve, the water that we serve, to others. If this is a big deal and you should be proud of this. This is the longest accomplishment, accomplishment that should have been done thirty years ago. But you all saw the fit, the, the fit to do this now. And who knows, two of us six of you. You all done, this is, this is big, really big. Uh, also, in a couple of weeks, fingers crossed, a little prayer for the Lord Jesus. We'll have a, we'll have a new business announcement coming to the city limits of Jamestown.
Good news.
So, uh, I wish I could tell you more, but I'm trying to look right now. So, uh, but anyway, with that being said, coordinates to K R S six one eight one zero. I ask to go into the executive session of Jamestown City Council.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay.